We'll be making a call in the morning.
I can go down there and visit the lights and hold them for you.
The Bee Gees are in the first place.
You have a place in order, say, and religions? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jerry?
No.
Did you get any public comment?
No. Not if you want me to stay dry.
All right. So, are there any announcements?
Item number 11 has changed from what was distributed. Item number 11 will now be an appointment to the new city clerk, Roxy Schubert. And then there will be no executive session this evening.
That's it?
Yes.
All right. The mayor's report. All right. There was a meeting this morning of the ad hoc committee, all to overflow, huge amount of people that were there. And maybe one of the most low-attended ad hoc meetings that we've had in a very long time. And one of the reasons, I think, was because Jim Prue and his wife Diane were here. And they had an open house at their newest facility yesterday, and over 250 people attended that yesterday. They were very, very pleased. Jim and Diane have invested wonderfully into our community. And so it was a great morning, and he received the Elbow Grease Award from the ad hoc committee. And you can see pictures on Facebook from now. The other thing was that everybody was pointing out how busy Lisburg has been on the weekends. And there have been so many things happening, and why is that? And we have various committees and individuals that are working very hard to welcome our visitors. And those of us who live here and are lucky to call Lisburg home, lots of activities that we can have. Tonight, another special activity at 7:00 at Pearson Chapel on the Bethany College campus will be a special showing of the film called Eating Animals. This film features several national farmers as well as Frank Reese Jr. of the Big Shepherd poultry ranch. I don't know how many of you have seen this, but there are a lot of people in town today here to premiere this film this evening. So it'll be done in the Pearson Chapel on the Bethany Campus starting at 7:00. Also, congratulations to the Smoky Valley Vikings. We're still in the playoffs. And what is our record now?
Ten and O.
Ten and O, okay. So the next round of playoffs will be here this Sunday, this Friday, will play Pratt Dress warmly. I think this is going to be the coldest game maybe that we've had. Also, this weekend, Maker Street is this Friday. This is also going to be another really well-organized event. They have over 16 locations. And if you buy gifts at any of the merchants downtown, you can get them wrapped for free this weekend. So the Christmas lights in Lisburg will be turned on Friday on the bridge as well as downtown. Fundraising is ongoing, so if people would like to contribute to that, David Haye at First Bank Kansas has been doing a great job in raising money for that. This Saturday is the kickoff for the Christmas shopping season in Lisburg. And it's called, you can play a game called the Tom T. Sprangle. And you can win a big shopping spree of gift baskets from the local merchants. Another event this weekend is the Landmark Concert Series organized by Mike Dreyer. This Sunday will be at the Sanzen Gallery entitled Pictures at an Exhibition, David. And I know you're familiar with that piece. And it probably won't be being played, but anyway, it'll be a wonderful event. It is free, starts at 2:00. There is also a reception honoring two wonderful, longtime employees at Lisburg City Hall. Jerry Spurling and Gaden Bother.
Other.
November 16th?
Three to five.
Three to five, in the Sunstrom Building. And we've all said this already this evening, but Jerry, above and beyond, you have brought a lot of glory to our community and certainly to our city staff. So we will miss you greatly. How many years is this in?
A little over 24.
A little over 24.
Yeah.
Roxy was disappointed she thought you were ducking.
Roxy is sitting there shaking in her boots going, please don't think you're going on a round ball trip or something. You're being...
Roxy's doing a great job.
So anyway, yes, we are. We're excited about Roxy being here as well. So are there any other announcements or anything that anybody needs to know or report? All right, going through the agenda, the consent agenda. Do I hear motion for approval?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Who?
Corey will second.
Okay, Jerry. Okay, Rick?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. The consent agenda is approved. Appointments. Yes?
And then another that we'd like to add to the EMS ambulance service, Marla Haggler. She's from Salina, and she's already certifies an EMT, and she's volunteered for other services. And would like to volunteer for our service. So I'm requesting the acceptance of Marla Haggler to the Lisburg Volunteer Ambulance Service.
So move. Do you have a second?
Second.
Polls in favor of this appointment?
Aye.
I would like to make some committee appointments. Do you have those included in your packet?
That's up to you.
Okay, always, always, all right. Again, one of the reasons that I think that our city moves forward is because of citizen involvement. And these people that I'm going to read your names, if you see them, say a special thank you. And this is volunteers. On the library board, your appointments are Phyllis Kelly and Philip Kett. The housing authorities, Sarah Zender and Martha Danielson. Recreation Advisory Board, Dane Pavlich and Kelsey Swisher. Planning and zoning committee, Dale Whitstone and Molly Johnson. Board of zoning appeals, Norman Dower and Mark Anderson. The cemetery board, Roy Lister. Design review, Elgin Swisher and Jeanette Martin. Golf course advisory, Ryan Bankston, Jim Osner, and Bill Parish. The tree board, Carmen Alquiz and Bob Ash. CDB advisory, Justin Burton and Cindy Wachter. And the Sunstrom Conflict Center, Mike Sample. You see these people, please say thank you to them. Do I?
Do you have a motion?
Any motion for approval, please?
To make the motion to accept the slate of volunteers as presented?
Second.
Is the move accepted to approve these? Polls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those? Okay, those. Okay, Jerry, can you see?
No action required. It's just minutes from the last meeting where a sketch plan was presented for proposed subdivision.
No business?
There is no business.
New business.
You ready?
Yeah.
The first item under new business is an energy management project three agreement between Kansas Municipal Energy Agency and the city of Lisburg. Before I go into real brief summary, I would like to introduce Paul Malberg and Neil Dany. Paul is the general manager of KDA, and Neil is the director of projects and asset management. I've been working very closely with both of these in the development of a future power supply plan for the city. So if I can't answer the questions, I guarantee you they can. And you're probably looking at them to answer a lot of the questions. The agreement is for the city of Lisburg to become part of the EMP three group, which is cities coming together for efficient and economical sharing of resources. Everybody still has their own resources, but it's a way to share that benefits all parties to the agreement. There are 15 cities now?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Existing and to total an arm of or two that have already signed on or start in 2020, at the same time Lisburg would join it. So it would be 16 if you guys had joined it.
Okay, thank you. And the benefits is, you know, aggregation of resources. Part of it is, you know, some are long on, I mean, further down when we, in the packet shows the power supply cost estimate, you know, the pan, I'll be so high now, I can't even remember, I can't take that high anymore, 2293 or somewhere around that per kilowatt for capacity right now to the EMP three group. There's members that are long on capacity. In other words, they don't, it's capacity they're not using. We're able to buy it from them as part of the group. We're looking at $2.25. I mean, that is the illustration of how this benefits the city of Lisburg. And so unless you have specific questions about the agreement itself, the city attorney had reviewed it in terms of form, didn't find any issues with it. And I would encourage any of you who are insomniacs to just take a look at this.
Can I understand it correctly that this contract doesn't take place until 2020?
That's correct.
Is it our fiscal year, is it going to be your...
Correct.
Which lies to what we have with West Star?
Well, our contract with West Star expires May 31, 2020.
Oh, 2020.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion, are you ready for that? One, two, three.
No, I, you can fight the motion to approve and a second to mitigate questions.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, further discussion.
I wonder if we could have these two gentlemen read all this.
I think one of the things that is going to be really important with this action from the city council is that we do understand it to a point. And then we can talk to our constituents about it because, I mean, why do you spend all this time and energy on something like this? And so we're talking about real dollars, there's savings for individual people. So I hope that we can all share this with our hearing constituents.
Well, for the sake of the two gentlemen who are here, I don't want to think that we just gave this a cursory look and pass it because we've been talking about this for months. And I think, you know, certainly not every detail, but we're pretty well aware of what we're getting out of this. This is a lot.
You know, the value of this is like our current contracts with an investor-owned utility, where a member of Kansas Municipal Energies, the KDA, which is a joint acting agency that acts on behalf of its member municipal electric utilities. Their motivation is provide cost-effective and reliable electric power to their members. There's not a profit motive behind it. Costs of KDA are passed through that cost from an administration standpoint, from a power supply standpoint. But they are able to aggregate the cities for advantageous power supply agreements for its members. And that's essentially what we'd be doing here. Yes, sir?
I think in the agreement itself and in our conversation, there's more advantages or more benefits to this than just pure cost of energy. What do you think would be the greatest advantage or benefit to the city of energy outside of just pure cost?
Well, the greatest advantage, I mean, obviously, the greatest advantage is going to be cost. But it's cities working together for the mutual benefit of each. But the, one nice thing about being part of the EMP is if city A wants to pursue, let's say, installing generation, that doesn't commit city B to do that. It's just part of it. You know, aggregation of the resources, right? You know, there's things that we can do together as a group that individually we can never get done. One of the things, probably jumping ahead a little bit, but we'll be looking at Resolution 05-18, which authorizes the approval of two power supply agreements. One of them is essentially summer peaking power, but it's only for two years. And the reason it's only for two years is what the thing that we're talking about is a utility scale solar project and the potential of that. Well, we could never do a, when I say utility scale, we're probably talking 30 megawatts or more. Well, in our eyes, peak is 8.9 megawatts historically. I mean, so we couldn't do a project like that. I mean, we could do a solar project, but we couldn't get the same level of pricing if we did it on our own. So that's one of the things that it provides. Also, from a transmission standpoint, it's considered one delivery point now for the whole EMP group. And so that peak demand is aggregated and since you have cities, not completely all across the state, as far as EMP three, but fairly diverse so that, you know, you could have a hot part of the state where you have a few cities peaking, and it could be cooler in another part of the state so that it balances out your peak and your individual peak is calculated based upon the coincident peak of the whole group. And typically, that keeps it a little lower than if you were operating individually. Do I explain that accurately?
I have another question on this. We talked here about if you're going to get out of this agreement, you have to tell them, you have to advise your group two years in advance. But is there a planned regeneration of what you're doing here? In other words, is this going to go until the year 3000? Or is there a time when it will be reviewed, or will that be constant then?
Well, I think you see probably reviews it themselves on an annual basis on the value. But in terms of a beginning and end date, we definitely have a beginning date of the agreement. The agreement itself runs in perpetuity until you decide to leave.
Okay.
As a city.
Any more questions or comments?
Yes, and that's one more. That is, is there any risk of the other partners or participants, if they were to pull out or get, let's say, if Roxy got a better offer somewhere, can they get out? And what would that leave us with what's remaining? Is that a potential problem or...
Oh, you know, that's a better question for Paul to answer.
I don't like it, Paul.
Well, one of the things that, you know, we've been here several times over the last couple of years and brought you the Dogwood opportunity and the Buckeye project. So you're just continuing that path of having control of your power supply. And that's what we provide. And as Greg said, it's the benefit of the EMP three group, it's the benefit of pulling everybody together and sharing those resources. And that is really, you know, it gives them one benefit there. But there's education that goes along with this, with EMP three group. We meet monthly and share ideas and concepts and so forth. So there's a lot of fringe benefits that come with it. As far as the potential of half the group deciding to leave, that could happen. It's a two-year out. We have not had any city leave us. EMP three's been around since 2010, started out with 10 cities, we're currently at 13. If Lisburg jumps on, we'll have three new additional in 2020. We're talking to four other cities. So we're headed toward about 20 cities. It's proving out to be a very valuable asset or structure for the cities. If half of them did leave, the other half would stay around, the next two items are dealing with, or the third item is dealing with additional power supply for you, you keep those things. So you keep Dogwood, you keep the Buckeye wind farm, you keep this energy contract with you. So your power supply costs will remain fairly stable if the group were, you know, half the group decided to leave. Now, do I see that happening today? I don't see any avenue where that would happen today.
In fact, I've had, I mean, I've attended a few of the EMP three meetings, and I've had several members, Corey does say we want to be part of our group, so.
Yeah, what Lisburg brings is that there's going to be the group that has his long and generated resources. We're going to have an additional cell at Lisburg. So that's a benefit for those cities to be a little bit more relevant. So it's really nice marriage, if you will.
As well as it further diversifies our sources of power within a defined purchasing group. Is that right?
That's correct. You guys have a really nice, you're going to have a very nice diversified portfolio with the Dogwood project, the wind project, your hybrid allocation of Western administration, Power Administration, WAPA and SPA, and now this, a couple of these energy contracts that we have with. Diversified in type of resource, diversified in terms, everything that you want to see affordable.
You know, and we've operated probably since Lisburg sold or shut down the power plant and our forward parts contract. We didn't have any flexibility under that contract. When new opportunities became available, we were married to that contract. As we're setting things up now, we will have flexibility because part of, and it's further down the list what we're looking at is buying part of our energy in the Southwest Power Pool market until it doesn't make sense, economic sense. And then we can look at, okay, what are some of the contracts we can get into to supply that more economically?
So how far are we away from West Star being our supplement instead of this being a supplement to West Star? Is that...
Well, I don't know if they'll be a supplement to us. I mean, they are our primary power supplier right now. May 31, 2020, contract ends. That's for power supply. They own the, we will still pay them for transmission because they own the transmission system, but it's open access, and that's controlled by the Southwest Power Pool, not by West Star. They have to file a tariff that gets approved on what cost to come over their system, but they don't have control over you can use it and you can't.
So it would be a lot less of us being at their mercy in what they want to charge, especially peak? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? Before you vote, I have one. I hope we all realize, and I think we do, unfortunately we are, that Greg Dumas is our city administrator. I think what he understands about all of this.
(inaudible).
Not true. And what we understand about it. So we're very thankful and grateful. Thank you very much for everything you shared off the table about this tonight. So we do have a motion, I believe, in a second. We'll need it. We need it.
I don't think you have to have a roll call, but I think it would be wise to do so on something like this.
Okay. Jerry? David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
The amendment does pass?
No, that was the original agreement, the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, I doubled back and forth.
We're on this forever, okay? Now, there are two amendments.
Amendment number one, delete some service schedules, add some service schedules. Additionally, it puts in a formula for what the variable operations and maintenance for energy cost component would be. And it changes, in the original agreement, you had a three-year termination notice under the amendment. It changes it to a two-year. So those are highlights of that agreement.
All right. And so you can, can motion to approve this amendment? Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve amendment number one to the EMP three agreement? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion about this? Do we need a roll call, Billy?
Well, this, I don't think so. Those are firm energy changes.
All right. Polls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign. All right, thank you. Resolution number 5-18.
This is, authorizes the mayor to execute two power purchase agreements between KDA and the city of Lisburg. The energy would be supplied by Nexttar Energy Marketing. In that second paragraph of the narrative there, that's 24 hours a day, not 240 hours. That was a really long day.
I have plenty of days like that. I'm so glad to see you, Greg.
We're all Mondays.
The first agreement is for a megawatt of firm energy, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's a seven-year agreement starting June 1st, so West Star agreement expires. This agreement takes place, runs for seven years. The second is for summer peaking, two megawatts of energy Monday through Friday. That would run from June 1, 2020 through September 30 of 2021. This goes back to that comment I made about flexibility, solar farm, et cetera. See what may be on the market or in a solar farm utility scale, solar farm could be developed as an opportunity. Those are really the highlights of the agreement. And if there's questions, basically, you'd be approving Resolution 05-18, which authorizes the mayor to execute those agreements.
Can I make your motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion, questions?
That second agreement, the Monday through Friday, evidently the peaks a lot higher Monday through Friday? Or what drives that?
You know, the peaks a lot higher Monday through Friday. When you look at it, you don't want a daily load curve. It's greater during weekdays than weekends.
It's pronounced, and then the pricing correlation with the Monday through Fridays is more expensive. So that's what we want to cover with fixed pricing. Some loads are generally high. generally higher and prices are generally higher.
What drives the load during the week mostly?
All the businesses that are running, up and running, industrial customers.
Well, and also people are, I mean, I can tell you, things are happening the fourth week of July or the first week of August between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., 98% of the time. And so it's when everybody gets home from work, cranks that air conditioner down. We're residential load. We're directly residentially, not so much commercially or industrial. So that peak demand is what we're trying to cover.
I have another question, and it's just mostly to satisfy my curiosity. And that's if a council can't encumber cash for a future council, but this contract doesn't take place until 2020, and the mayor then has the authority to sign a purchase contract. So I'm just curious, it's the difference between a promise to purchase and a execution of a contract?
You're executing a contract right now that set out the terms. You're not actually purchasing anything at this point in time. You approve, you approve the expenditure after the invoice as you see. Additionally, there is a, and I say just recently, there's been a Kansas Supreme Court case that looks at governmental aspect and proprietary aspect of governing and how it handles purchasing decisions. Paulson, city attorney covered that in earlier.
I'm curious. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I think on this one, Mayor, I think we can raise a, yeah, a resolution.
Greg?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Tim, public safety radios?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Save trouble?
Well, now that we've saved all that money.
That's up.
Let me try.
We are changing our radio system to the Hurson County dispatch, going from our current EDAC systems, the P25 system. And the contract was signed this year, and they evidently they were able to come up with the money to make it happen.
They who?
The Hurson County. So that means it's inevitable that we are going to be going to the P25 system, which means we're going to have to buy new radios because our current radios will not work with the P25 system. Some of the information that I provided in the packet shows the optimum numbers that each department would like to see. As far as radios, what we're looking at tonight, it's not an optimum number. It's just a number that we can function from Fire EMS and police. So there may be a later date that we can ask for more radios, but for right now, we're looking at the purchase of radios from Fire EMS and police. Some of the radios that we looked at included the TEC and with the Harris radios and Motorola radios. And we are looking at approving the purchase of Motorola radios tonight in the form of the EPX 900 portable radio and the EPX 1500 for the mobile radios.
All right. And that is the motion to approve purchase of those $76,574.45?
That is correct. So move.
Your second?
Second.
Right.
Chief, I don't quite understand here. Is this a hand-operated unit?
That's correct. The portals are just like what I'm worried about.
Okay. So you would, they would go with the officers that were on duty?
That's correct.
Okay. And they don't have to be installed in the vehicle?
That's correct. The mobile radios would have to be installed. The portals do not.
Where would the mobile radio be?
Like in the, like if you have one in your car or in a fire truck or in an ambulance, you have a radio installed in the vehicle.
Okay.
Usually in the console by the driver's seat.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is this what the article in the McPherson sent out was about, recently, where people aren't going to be able to hear transmissions over the scanners and things like that with this conversion?
The radios will have the ability to be encrypted so that they won't be scannable. So yes, there's a very good chance that our system will be mostly encrypted and be unable to scan.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to, if I could, I know Darren Ebbling's here tonight with EMS and Fire, and of course, he's my radio guru. And he really helped me a lot putting this information together, checking all the different radios, what was best, what was not as good. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to Darren Ebbling for helping me with this project.
Thank you. Can you further discussion?
Well, I know we talked about this before, and we've known that this change was coming for some time. We just didn't know exactly when. And you suggested that they did get the funding, I guess, McPherson County did to make that move. Is that kind of a surprise or did we think it was coming in the next few years or?
Well, I know that the project was like a $10 million project, and it was a lot more money than we thought it was going to cost. I don't think they really knew that they were going to be able to come up with the money or if they would have to put it to a boat in August to see if they could come up with the funds that way. So it was kind of, we really didn't know if it was going to happen or not. But they did evidently come up with the money, and so the project is moving forward. I've seen the outline of the project, and they'll be installing these systems through 2019, near the end of 2019. They hope to have the equipment installed. They're looking at going live with the program February of 2020. They'll probably run both systems for about 30 days to try to work out the bugs. And then the complete switch over will probably be around March 1st of 2020. Okay. Thank you.
And it looks like we had about 38,000 budgeted in 2017 that we didn't spend because it wasn't ready then. We had another 38, and we did not spend that, obviously. Then 38,000 for 2018. So that's a total of 76,000, which is what we're voting on tonight. And that kind of gets us the bare necessity in your mind of what we eventually will need.
Right. I think we're going to have to buy more radios, but I think this will be enough to allow us to function until we can come up with some more money to buy that.
Did you put any money in your seventh and your 19 budget?
No, but there will be some in 2020.
All right. Any further discussion?
You ready?
Yes. Sorry. David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was one of your larger items.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Ed, Eric, for all your contributions as well. All right. There it is. Welcome to Trail.
Um, this is another step in the slow process to kind of make this trail go back to June to approve the agreement to provide an action fund of $146,000. And that check is due by November 15. Here is the request to authorize Larry to cut the check and send it to KDA. Can I ask if you approve?
Can you motion to approve? How much is that again?
$146,000.
$146,000. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second? All right. Any questions, comments? Eric, do you want to just kind of do this one more time? Way out the trail, it starts at Bethany Home's campus, parking lot area.
The north trail, travel at parking lot, which is nearby the baseball field, that's about right before the overpass crossing over the old railroad. That's the beginning of the trail. It will then go northeast a distance until it hits the subdivision Emerald Lake, where it will take a sharp right turn, go due south along the border of Emerald Lake, and it's what we are currently selling to Bethany Home, farm around now. It will travel down to the Baptist church or around the Baptist church, staying on Bethany Home's property.
So to the west of the Baptist church?
The west of the Baptist church, where it will cross Wells Fargo, go to the other side of Wells Fargo and end up in a pizza corner there at Harrison, where it will cross and tie in with the existing 10-foot sidewalks that we installed with a street construction project several years ago, anticipating this very extension of the trail. So it's about 1.4 mile extension. And then the alternate that was added, and the alternate that was added, fortunately, we were able to fund, will be a short stub that will carry this trail all the way out to the cemetery, which will provide bicycle pedestrian connectivity with the cemetery home and cemetery, which I think is a really, really good thing for the project.
On the south side of those five?
Yes. So, very happy. And the construction start date is in time between January 7th and July 22nd. I talked to Hurson Construction, who have contracted the award of the project. And they anticipate a March following start date, you know, it depends on their construction schedule. But I kind of expect the project to start in March. It will last 70 days. They'll have to complete within 70 days, and that's 14 weeks. Pretty quick project. We'll see if done or.
All right. Any further questions?
The standards of the project will be similar to the existing Trail Act as far as KDA standards and all this stuff.
Yes.
No lighting?
No lighting at this one, no.
Any economy art?
Well, we don't really have a lot of developed infrastructure in the area. It would certainly add a lot to the price to drive electrical out into this rural area at this time.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, Gary?
Rick?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thanks.
Motion to pass the same to Gary. Oh.
Whatever.
Okay.
It's Roxy's name.
The Christmas lighting contest is something we've done for the last, oh, I think, three years. And it's just kind of a fun project to encourage folks to decorate for the holidays and just have a little fun with it. We, we don't, it's not a big prize, but it's, it's a lot of fun. And people, the winners are awarded cash prizes in Lindesborgh loot. And if you're not familiar with what Lindesborgh loot is, it's our own little personal money that we have designed. And it's good at any business, any retailer within the city of Lindesborgh. And for the retailers to get their money back, all they have to do is bring the loot into us and we will reimburse them their money. It's not a huge, it's not a huge, it's $500, but it's fun. And it's, we would encourage all, everyone in the community to take part because it's, we have independent judges and they're different. We try to get different judges each year, and we try to get people that don't know where everybody lives. So that they're just basically judging the lights and not because it's my neighbor. So anyway, that's the project.
All right. So the motion is to approve the 2018 Christmas lighting program. The amount of money is $500. And that is three prizes, is that correct?
Yes. The winner gets 300. The second place gets 150. And the last one gets 50.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Any other comments?
The list is not short for Lindesborgh loot fest. It's just.
You know, I'm afraid if we did Lindesborgh loot fest, nobody would do it.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
Since there's a potential for them to use that loot, then perhaps we should investigate for this.
Exactly.
All right. $500. I don't think we have to do anything. We can just approve. All those in favor of the Christmas lighting contest?
I think, I think spending the money should do it.
Do it anyway. Okay. 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 David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Cory? Jody?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion does pass. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You know, I guess they could use it to pay their senior utility bills, so maybe all of them.
Okay, I have to say that's happened. So, yes.
Has it paid for? Do you like your, they use to, to the lights?
Okay. Next item is health insurance.
I will speak to that. The city's health insurance program runs from December 1 of each year through November 3. We have a health reimbursement account type system. Use Freedom Claims Management as the third-party administrator, and then Blue Cross and Blue Shield were proposing to be the umbrella coverage with $6,500, $13,000 deductible. The included in the packet are the proposed premiums. The, this would actually be a 1.85% decrease in total premium cost over 2018. One change from 2018 is we have self-insured the dental. We are recommending that we go with Blue Cross and Blue Shield's dental program. It provides better coverage at a lesser rate than what we can self-insure ourselves.
All right. So the motion is to approve, we just umbrella health insurance and dental coverage, if we cross Blue Shield, the $6,500 slash $13,000 deductible for the employee contribution, and the employee contribution to health insurance cost remain at the 2018 health insurance contribution levels. Do I hear a motion?
So, wait for a second. It should be employee, employer, yes. Each place where employees, no? Oh, I guess employee contribution. I assume it would be, I would. Employees' contribution remain the same and the employer's contribution remain the same. Oh.
Okay, so who made the motion?
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right.
David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion does pass. And thank you to all of you who are on the city staff and the owners who worked through this, will process, and will take long process. So, thank you.
Better this year than some years.
All right. The next item for business is. All right, um, the next item for business is the contract lobbyist.
Uh, one of the things we've talked about in terms of the strategic plan and Goal Three, partnerships and avenues for efficient and effective delivery of municipal services, was the idea of, um, hiring a, a contract lobbyist. Interviews were done with four firms, we received proposals from three. Um, the fourth firm in going through, uh, client list has conflict of interest. And so a proposal wasn't solicited from that particular firm. Uh, the three firms were Brayden, Brayden Height are in love, Federico Consulting, and Height Governmental Consulting. Um, the recommendation is to go with Federico Consulting and to encumber 4,000 for the months of November and December. And then we would come back in, uh, January to encumber for the 2019 year.
What are your motion? To approve Federico Consulting?
Motion to approve Federico Consulting for governmental relations services and to encumber $4,000 for the months of November and December 2018.
Second.
Okay, further discussion?
Well, I mean, this, in my broad, broad, intricate math, this comes out to be about $2,000 a month, that's pretty good, that'd be my mail. But I mean, is that what you would look to see if it's extended then to next year?
Yeah, that, and that's what the proposal is, to be $2,000 a month. Um, one of the, the reason, budgetary purposes why we want to recommend. Yeah, that's what I got. Um, and then come back and, and encumber for 2019.
With the, uh, assuming a potential turnover in the legislature, um, from, from the top down, I guess, will we see much benefit for the remaining two months of this year paying for that versus waiting till, until January, until 2019 to get their services?
Benefit is getting in front of those people that are elected tomorrow before they get into the legislature. Two of these firms have already been out meeting with the incumbents and challengers in, in, in these different races. Um, and there is value in getting in front of them prior to them actually taking office. I mean, that's when the relationship building really starts. Is getting in front of them as opposed to going to them when you have an issue.
What was the tipping point in the selection or the recommendation of, um, this particular?
Eddie?
Yes.
Um, the tipping point? It might be, I think, yeah, Brayden Height are in love and Federico. Um, the tipping point was, um, not necessarily calling references that they gave, but calling people that I knew that were both elected, other lobbyists, et cetera. And, uh, the tipping point was, because every, all of them said both of these firms could do an excellent job. So the question is, who's more effective? And Federico Consulting is the one, they say, is the most effective. They're the ones you'll see more in the State House than the others. Not that the others don't go there, but they spend a lot of time in that building.
Thank you.
And also when you look at their actual proposal, their proposal, um, provides more services than what we've asked for.
And to kind of answer Gary's question, I think what, um, we can expect is that they will come here and they will meet with us as a council and, and we will understand what they're doing and what we want them to do. What are the, what are the issues that we have going forward? And so, um, it was suggested by them, we really need to get to know you and to understand what you want from us. So I think that's why the, as, as opposed to waiting until January when you're on the throes of the whole session.
And one interesting thing about this proposal from Federico is if we have a particular bill or a particular issue that comes up, they're not asking for additional compensation to manage that process on that particular bill. They're going to do it under that $2,000 fee for the scope of services that they defined within this. And the others, if we had a particular bill that we needed them to roll first, would come with an additional fee because of the tight commitment.
I know all three firms and all are, are very well-respected and all do a great job. I think that you wouldn't have gone wrong with any of the three. And Ray, Mayor, I will trust your recommendation on this. I think, uh, in fact, one of the things I did not mention, the fact that John has been executive director of Leadership Hands for a number of years and the network of people throughout the state that he has developed through that, I think, could have been of the best as well. Not that the others don't have networks, they have plenty of networks as well, but that would be one.
Okay, any more discussion? David? Jerry?
Rick?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, so, um, motion does pass and we will, we call it all in.
Yes.
Yes. Exciting times for this work. All right, uh, next item is appointing a city clerk.
Okay, come on. We're almost there.
Well, uh, why?
I'm ready to answer this. Oh, that's right, she has to be.
It's waiting to approve.
Sorry, sorry. I just want to.
She's just getting her. With confirmation by somebody else.
Okay, um, I took a long process. We have, um, come to a wonderful, perfect selection for our community. And so I'd like to appoint, and then Roxy Shugren as the new state president of Linsburg. And we have to add motions.
A motion and second and a motion to approve.
So good. In sending votes?
We're having a time for discussion.
They're not covering. Yeah, no. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those?
No.
Okay, now we're all.
Just wear it.
Okay, if you will raise your right hand, you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk for the city of Linsburg, so that we got.
Okay. All right. All right. This is now the second session. So here we are for others. About others? Anybody got another? Lane has another.
I know in October we talked about the construction of the dog park. And is it started or what is the status on that?
Uh, you have approved the construction of the first phase of fencing. Uh, and that is in the process, we're waiting for Bill Bellinger to come down and install fence. We held him off in time for us to get a water line installed with three hydrants for future, for future fenced areas, especially this one higher for the panel we're building. Since Bill is on, we'll have it built and we'll have Phase One approved and built. Uh, the signage was approved last week?
Yes.
So, that's, I go as well.
Cory?
Uh, we talked about Christmas lights and I'm just curious on some of the Christmas lights, public Christmas lights. Um, what's typical, uh, what's our typical contribution as a city to the lighting in Linsburg? And how does that compare to other communities or across the board in other communities?
Um, our contribution is the cost of electricity, I can't remember what it is, I'm not learning it.
But we've had news reports that we've been given, I know.
Yeah, I mean, we track, I mean, if, if we provide it, whether it's paid for or not paid for, we track it. Um, and so it's, we track what, what is provided. Um, also other arteries, the, using the body truck to, to help install those lights. Um, community comparison, some communities don't do anything, some communities do it all. Um, Joaquin, it's, it's, it's an all-city thing. I mean, they take the whole park, they, they're Christmas City USA is, and it's all city-funded. So, I mean, it is, it's extreme, from nothing to everything.
There was discussions this morning via the committee. Um, and there is a group of people that are going to look into this, um, about, um, coming up with a three, four-year plan, um, hiring professional people as opposed to Merlyn Larson and Carmen Alquist, um, who have volunteered for many years doing all of this.
They do professional work here, it's not paid.
That's right, that's right. And they have asked to be relieved of their duties many times, but we have nothing to replace them with. So there is a group of people that are going to look at this and possibly look at, um, applying to some grants through the Nut Foundation to, to have Christmas lighting in, in whatever part of the town. I don't want to just stay downtown, because I don't really know what they're, that they're saying. So that's, that was discussed this morning.
I visited the Bureau yesterday, the senior friend who had been down at the Wellness Center there. We talked a little bit about that.
Mm-hmm.
It was funded through a school district, bonded construction and operation and management is through a city sales tax. And a city will receive that.
Where was that at?
Do you remember?
Okay.
I think Beth was talking about the size of the pool there. Was that what you mentioned, was that the size of the tables together? Well, as the pool is coming, I don't think people here would be satisfied with that. You know, we don't know if you're what they like. It was small.
Okay. Um, some of you were there at the meeting last Tuesday of the, um, uh, task force, Recreation Wellness Task Force, made a presentation of the findings. And, um, not terribly well-attended, but very often these things are not. So, um, I think what was, what was, um, I kind of assumed that would happen from that meeting is that this council would start moving forward. Beth, um, do you want to say what you can do on this aspect?
Yeah, so I've, um. I have been contacting, um, local facilities around Kansas, some owners, some YCA's, some school districts, um, and just trying to get as much information from them who their general contractors were, who their design consultants were, what they have in them, who owns them, who runs them, um, how they pay for them. And so, we're kind of starting to see if there's any constant of, you know, anything. And honestly, there's not a whole lot. Uh, there are multiple people I've talked to, we were in, in Council Grove, Pratt, um, that's a nonprofit places, some are built on foundations. I mean, there's just really a lot of different ways, a lot of school districts. Um, so currently we're going through all that to put a spreadsheet together to give to you guys, but then you can kind of move forward on that, on who we want to contact, if we want to contact, how that works.
Okay. Beth and I visited a couple times about this. Um, one of the thoughts was, um, applying for a Nut Foundation grant. Um, those grants have to be in by January the 11th. And this grant would be to hire a design consulting group, um, that would then possibly come to, not possibly, would come to Linsburg and visit with this group or some associated appointed group, um, about, you know, looking at the results of the survey and what do we want? And how would we fund it? And where would it be located and many, many things. Um, in order for that to happen by January the 11th, um, there's a lot of stuff that has to happen. Um, I kind of, um, put some thoughts down today, um, about timeline and, um, we would have to get on this right away. Um, it's not that this design group would have everything designed, that's not it. They would give us a contract and we would have to say to them, this is what we want you to do. And, um, so the design work would not be done by that time, but whatever numbers of dollars that this would be. Um, in visiting with the Nut Foundation, it was a community foundation. Um, this was a, this was a fine idea for them because if we eventually look to the Nut Foundation as some funding for this, having the design process be a part of, of the action of that whole Nut Foundation gift. And, um, so, um, we probably need to talk about that and figure out, uh, how we move forward here because we're, we're talking about two months for that grant to have to be due on January 11th. So if anybody, and I told other people too, and, um, you know, if you have any suggestions for Beth to follow up and say, call someone so. Um, Jim Prue, we were saying, it's somebody in Colorado. Um, he's from Colorado, he's, that have been built. And so, um, you know, give Beth the information, she can do the research.
There's a couple in Missouri also that as well.
Okay, all right, thank you, Beth.
Are you going to have a second showing of the movie tonight? The late, the late show?
No, I think you pretty well missed it.
I think so.
That will hit you.
You want your others, what are your motion for adjournment?
So who?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Thank you.
You got it?